I'd like to call to order the August 22 meeting of the Shelby Township Planning Commission. I'll ask the Acting Secretary to call the all, please.
Mr. Loray.
Here.
Mr. Oppone.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Groot.
Here.
Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Meredith.
Here.
Mr. Moffett.
I'm here.
Mr. Snyder's here and Ms. Moore's absent. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you. Next item is approve of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Oppone, support by Loray. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approve of the minutes from July 11.
So moved.
Support?
Moved by Snyder, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Evening. This evening, we'll start with two correspondence regarding master plan. One from the City of Utica. That's the planner to... Well, actually, the first one from the City of Utica, the second from the Charter Township of Washington.
Thank you, Chairman. The City of Utica is going to be in the process of updating their five-year master plan, and this is part of the requirement to provide notices to the abutting communities.
Okay. You have no objection?
No.
Is there a motion to receive and file?
So move.
Your support? Moved then supported. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Second item, I assume, is the same, or is this specific amendments that Washington's already...
They are also updating their five-year master plan, and this just is a notification as well. I don't have any objections to this. Once we get their updated plan, we'll have an opportunity to review it as well.
Great. Thank you. Again, same type motion. It's one to receive and file by Meredith, support by Groot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This evening, we've got three site plans in front of us. The first being Site Plan Number 22-027, Brandon Bilet... Bilet?
Oh, yeah.
Try the French. Good evening. Name and address, please.
Brandon Bilet for 8090 Speedway, Shelby Township.
And what are you proposing?
A duplex, a single building with a duplex on it. I had a... Have a plot plan prepared by Fennin Associates. I've had a review with the city's engineers, and I'm addressing all of the issues right now.
Perfect. We have a copy of it. There should be a way to, now that everything's electronic, to just for them to automatically put the stuff so it can be seen, correct? Maybe next time, we'll ask them to do that. Thank you. Okay, thank you. This is Zoned R2, right?
Yes.
It's an appropriate request for the district. I'll ask... Nick, you did the review on this?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you give your report, please?
Thank you. As you said, it is Zoned R2. That's a duplex zoning district, so it is a permitted use in that district. The surrounding development pattern is very similar. It's a mix of single-family, commercial, and duplex units around this property. The master plan supports duplex or more dense, single-family at this property as well. As far as the site plan goes, it's fairly minor as what's required in the site plan. The first two items are things that you can adjust on the site plan to indicate them on there, such as the zoning of the site and the surrounding properties, and the right-of-way and easements identified with library and page number. If the units are to be sold, we will need a master deed submitted to the township and registered with the Macomb County Register of Deeds. The only pressing concern is that there is a 35-foot rear yard setback required, and 25 feet is provided. However, that was approved through various requests previously. Besides that, there are some Department of Public work comments about the subject field requirements there and the lack of sewer. And besides that, the fire hydrant noted that they cannot be... The fire hydrants cannot be more than 500 feet apart, and certain portions of your building exceed that distance from the fire hydrants. So that has to be addressed with engineering as well.
Okay.
Other than that? So you... I'm sorry. So the rear setback variance was... He took that... He actually did it the proper... Or a proper way. He got the approval before he submitted the plan?
Correct.
All right, very good. To the board, any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
I move to approve Site Plan Number 22-027 for Brandon Bilet for Front Gate Ventures, 8090 Speedway Drive, located north of 21 Mile Road, east of Van Dyke, for a proposed two-unit duplex. This approval is subject to the applicant submitting a revised site plan, addressing all department and Planning Commission comments.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Snyder. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
Mr. Loray?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chiefs. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is Site Plan Number 22-028, Raymond Sherwood for Sherwood Brewing.
Greetings. So we are looking to reopen the...
Sorry. Name and address, please.
Oh, Raymond Sherwood Building. It's a business address, 45689 Hayes Road, Shelby Township. Personal address is 14168 Almhurst in Sterling Heights. We are looking to reopen the patio that we had temporarily during COVID. We had brought it up before. They asked us to put ADA-approved right-of-way through the patio, so we went and got that approved through the state, and then we'd like to reopen our patio.
Makes sense. Did you do the movie theater, the outdoor movie? Was that...
We... They did it a few times.
Was it your parking lot, but not you?
Yeah, with our neighbors. It just never took off, so.
Yeah, okay. I remember approving it, but I was curious whether it worked or not. Nick, why don't you give us your report, please?
Yes, as Mr. Sherwood said, they're looking to make this outdoor dining area a permanent fixture as part of their establishment. They've operated this since about the beginning of the COVID shutdowns in 2019, 2020, without any issue from the township or any residents or any patrons to the property. That being said, it's pretty straightforward what they're proposing. The only things that need to be notified on the site plan are the hours of operation. You have to note that the outdoor dining area won't be used for outdoor storage, especially during the winter when you're not necessarily using it. And the building department wanted to note that with the additional occupant load, you have to make sure that all your plumbing fixtures can meet the needs of all your increased customers there.
Okay.
And besides that, you also do have an open building permit with the building department that I'm pretty sure you're aware of. That ought to be finalized and closed out before you make the move on this permanent outdoor dining area.
Yep. We've been... We just got in the parts that we needed to get the doors fixtures finalized, so.
Excellent. And then with that ADA walkway too, that 36-inch pathway right through the middle, that ought to be approved by the building department too, but that was just noted by our engineers as part of their review.
Okay. All right. To the board, any questions?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
What are the hours of operation for the outdoor seating?
They would be the same as our regular hours. So right now, we're Monday... Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 3:00 p.m. till 9:00 p.m. And Fridays and Saturdays, 12:00 noon until 10:00 p.m.
Okay, just wondering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No other questions. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Oppone?
Moved to approve Site Plan Number 22-028, Raymond Sherwood for Sherwood Brewing Company, 45689 Hayes Road, parcel number 23-07-36-400-049, located north of Hall Road, west side of Hayes Road, proposal of a permanent outdoor dining patio. This approval is subject to applicants submitting revised renderings, addressing all department and Planning Commission comments.
Support.
Moved by Oppone, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Loray?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Meredith?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Groot?
Yes.
And the Chair of the Chiefs. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is a public hearing, a conditional rezoning petition, number 22-025, and Site Plan Special Land Use Request for Kendall Peak for Peak Holdings. I'll ask the Secretary to read the notices published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following conditional rezoning and Site Plan Special Land Use. Applicant Kendall Peak, 78287 Fisher Road, Bruce Township, Michigan, 48065. Proposed zoning conditional rezoning from LM Light Manufacturing to HM Heavy Manufacturing in Site Plan Special Land Use. Location 48181 and 48189 Ryan Road, south of Hamlin Road, west side of Ryan Road. Conditional rezoning petition is number 22-025 in Site Plan SLU. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, August 22, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the conditional rezoning application and Site Plan Special Land Use. The application for the conditional rezoning and Site Plan SLU may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Written comments may be submitted in the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett, Chair, Raquel Moore, Secretary. Twenty-nine property owners and one applicant were given the notice.
I almost feel like we should give you a standing ovation for a first-time guy.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. And just so the record is reflected, that we did not receive any correspondence on this request. Format for this public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner or representative will be asked to come up, state what they're requesting, their reasons for it. We'll then bring it to the board to ask any questions that they may have for the petitioner. We will then open it up. I will then open it up to the public. Throw off any comments or questions. I'll make note of those, and then bring the petitioner up after we receive them all and ask them to address them. One second. And then ultimately, we'll make a recommendation to the Township Board on this request, which is ultimately the body that will make the final decision. With that, the petitioner? Anyone that speaks, I need your name and your address, and then when you're done speaking, to sign in on the sheet that's right next to the microphone. You can do it after you... I don't know what to say.
This is something new for us, so we really don't know where to start.
Okay. How about what it is... What are you requesting of... Could you bring that mic down and speak into it, please?
We're requesting that the...
Yeah, your name and address.
Ann Reeling, 46084 Imperial Lane, Macomb Township, Michigan. And I'm here with Kendall Peak and Calvin Peak.
Okay.
Okay. We're requesting the zoning be changed to reflect what we have been doing on the property for close to 50 years. The zoning...
So you've been storing trucks and composting pallets for 50 years?
We do not compost pallets. That is an adjoining, a neighboring property that does that.
But you're requesting that of this petition, with this petition, to be able to do that? Or you would... Well, go ahead. Just tell me, what are you requesting? Not what you've been doing, but what are you asking?
We're asking that we be allowed to park, rent space to commercial vehicles to park their trucks, and like landscape trucks, trailers, large commercial vehicles on the property. And it's rented on a month-to-month basis. They... It's not for storage. It's more for just temporary parking. Majority of these trucks leave every day. Then we're referring to semi-trucks, tractors, along with their trailers, landscape vehicles, a lot of commercial things that can't be parked in neighborhoods.
So what time periods, what frame of time do you... Do they rent this?
Month-to-month basis.
For a month, but they're in and out on a month?
Right. Exactly. And some truck drivers are long-haul drivers, so they'll rent a spot. They don't know when they're going to be coming in, and sometimes they're gone for three months at a time. But when they do get back, they need a place to be able to park their vehicles. So we have that also. Additional parts of the property, we use... We receive in natural materials like grass, leaves, tree branches, brush. We recycle this material. What we can turn into topsoil, we turn into topsoil and then resell the topsoil. And also, the other end of it is the brush, trees, logs, we mulch and then sell the mulch. We do not take pallets in.
Okay. All right. So you're asking for two... Well, there's more than that. Keep going.
Well, it's the two... The natural material recycling.
Okay.
Because we store that material until it's sold, and the topsoil has to be aged, and so it breaks down so it can be sold as topsoil. So it's the two things. Being able to do the natural recycling and store that material, and then rental space for commercial vehicles.
So how many commercial vehicles are you asking to store?
I don't have the total number. I had it on my plan. It's probably...
Couple dozen?
No.
More, less?
Probably 50, right around 50.
What we've received from planning is saying 130 spots, 130 trucks.
Is that what it was? That's the potential spots.
Okay. Well, but that's... I mean, we sort of have to need to... We have to base it on what the capacity is going to be.
Right.
The decision we make, okay?
Right.
Okay.
We've been doing, storing vehicles for years, you know, parking vehicles. There was an asphalt business. We owned an asphalt business at one point, and we kept all of our vehicles there. We had the material...
So what are you proposing to... Are you going to adjust the site, the site plan at all? Are you going to make any improvements to the site? You just want...
We just want the zoning to match.
Okay. 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 Anything else you wanted to add? And there's what? There's a cell tower there that you... But I don't think we need... That's really not part of this, right?
A radio tower. Yeah, there's no cell on it. It's a radio tower.
A radio tower? Oh, okay. I didn't know they had those anymore. I'll ask the planner for her report, if she wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Chairman. So as was indicated, they are seeking rezoning from heavy manufacturing or from light manufacturing to heavy manufacturing to support some of the uses that they've been doing on this site for a number of years. Now, just for clarification purposes, the radio antennas, space rental, they will not need any approvals from this board to rent space on that antenna itself. You may be required to fill out a certificate of zoning compliance through the building department, but you do not need any approvals from this board for that use. The rental of office space, you will not need approval from this board as well, because that falls within the right-of-use in that light manufacturing district. The only other thing you may need is the certificate of zoning compliance through the building department as well, so we can keep track of businesses that are going in and out of that site. So those two, you can do with that light manufacturing zoning. Now, the uses that will require special land use approval is the recycling and storage of natural materials that are used to produce topsoil and mulch. Now, this is kind of tricky because some of the light manufacturing, if it stays light manufacturing, they'll require special land use approval for the outdoor storage of the topsoil and the mulch, and then the parking of the 130 trucks and trailers. So... But based on heavy manufacturing, they will only need the special land use. If this is approved as HM, they will only need special land use for the recycling and storage of natural materials. So with that, with their explanation, they are actually composting. So again, that is...
We don't compost.
No, we don't compost. We don't sell compost.
We don't have nothing to do with composting.
So I guess then, what is the difference?
Yeah, what?
If you look at the word "composting," it has nothing to do with what we're doing. We take landscaping items from residents and... Landscapers. Landscapers and stuff like that, that if it's turned and aged, we sell it as topsoil. Compost is a completely different animal, something that we don't want nothing to do with. Number one, because of the smell that comes with composting, and that's the last thing that we want, is a complaint because of the smell of what's coming out of our operation. So when we hear that word "composting," we just kind of cringe at it, because I know of another business down in Grashit and Quinn. They compost primarily.
Can you hear him in the back of the room? Okay.
And they get a lot of complaints. And we've known about this for years, and it's just something that we don't want nothing to do with. But the tree branches and the wood that we get, we make mulch out of. Ninety percent of it gets hauled out to various places like the power plant in Flint. Some companies will reuse the material for mulch. They produce mulch.
So you do topsoil? I heard you say topsoil. You do topsoil.
Topsoil.
You do topsoil and mulch.
Recycle, pretty much yard waste, tree branches, grass, leaves, flower beds. Yeah, the leaves and the flowers.
So you do mulch and you do topsoil?
Yeah, it's two different operations, yes. It kind of goes hand in hand, because when we let the mulch set for a year, we have to screen it, get all the fines out of it, because it's too topsoily. When you sell the mulch, there's too much fines in it, and the fines we get screened out before we end up making the topsoil. It makes really good topsoil.
So what kind of traffic? So how many, say, on a monthly basis, how often do you... How many trucks bring you material in to not compost?
It's variable throughout the season. During the warm summer months, we get the landscapers and the tree clearing companies that come in to drop off their... You know, they'll work all day cutting a tree up, and then they'll bring it to us, and we charge them a few dollars to drop it off. And we got a machine that mulches it, and most of the mulch that we make goes right out the door so that we don't have to stockpile so much. And then we keep about 10% of it, and we regrind that for our cell. After we screen it. After we screen it. And then the screens go into the topsoil pile, and then the topsoil pile gets pushed back until it kind of ages. Three years. Like three years. And then we screen the topsoil and sell it back to almost the same people that drop things off, the landscapers. They buy our topsoil. We have residents that buy the topsoil. And it's a different topsoil that you'll get from someone that... Site developers. Site developers that screen their topsoil. It's a richer topsoil that residents like to use for gardens and stuff.
Sort of... One of the big issues, as I see it, and again, I'm just one person up here, is that we have an issue with the infrastructure on Ryan, as you know probably as well as anybody, with its ability to handle the traffic that's going up and down on it. The township has made sort of a... Has held off some of the development, especially as it relates to truck traffic going in and off of Ryan because of that concern over the infrastructure. And so that's a lot of these questions. I'm just trying to, one, get a handle on how much impact is your business and this use having on Ryan Road?
Our family years ago had an asphalt plant back there, back in the 1940, 1950s. And with the asphalt plant there, they had to be fed with incoming materials so that the semis, the semi, the gravel trains used to haul in raw materials, and then the asphalt plant would make their material, and then the hot asphalt would be trucked out. There was a lot more truck traffic back in 1970 than there is today.
Yeah, but again, but there was way more traffic, and I was on that road. And I was on that road in the early 70s.
Yeah.
So I can tell you, and that road hasn't changed at all. It has not changed at all.
It's funny you say that. I just remarked that to my daughter today, because when I was a kid, Ryan Road wasn't any different than it is today.
It's the exact same road, you know.
I mean, we like to have...
I've made that joke to them this before. I remember, because there was a hobby store on Auburn, and I lived like over at 23 and Shelby. I used to ride my bike up that hill on Ryan to get to the hobby store. And you could ride your bike on Ryan Road back in the day, so, and not get killed.
Hasn't changed much.
Well, the road hasn't changed at all, but the problem is, is that the number of uses have increased a lot, and a lot of the... It is somewhat of a main thoroughfare for traffic getting to that sort of central west part of the township.
Yeah.
And that's just something that we've got to sort of kind of get our handles on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it'd be great if they'd expand the road. These decisions would be a lot easier for us, but again, they don't give us an... They don't let us spend that money or any money, really.
When we got the permit from the county for the right-of-way, we put the approach in on the west side to approach our property, and we had the plans and the approval to put a bypass lane in, but the county told us to hold off on the bypass lane, because at the time, they believed that the road would be turned into a five-lane highway like Van Dyke and 23 Mile Road is, east of Mount Road. And they haven't done it yet, and I agree with you, without that five-lane highway, Ryan Road makes it hard to travel on, even pulling out of our gate at the end of the day.
Just give me three lanes. I mean, there ain't no way we're getting five lanes on Ryan Road. That's, you know, especially because that ends at Ryan.
Ryan Road coming up to...
And the bridge.
Ryan Road coming up to Sterling Heights is five-lane, and it stops right where M59 is. And the bypass or the road over M59, over Ryan Road, is M59, isn't wide enough to support a five-lane highway. So if the county wanted to improve that road, they would have to change that bridge over Ryan Road of M59.
The bridge over the Clinton River wouldn't allow for that.
Also, with the Clinton River, they're building a bridge on Dequindre Road right now because the traffic has increased so much. So right now, I don't know if it's done yet, but they're building a bridge right now.
Go tell anybody, but it's done. All right. To the board, are there questions? Comments? Sure.
I don't know if you want comments now or after we have the public hearing.
We'll hold off on the comments, but...
Okay. I'll wait.
Okay. All right, thank you. All done? Yeah, so what I'm going to do is now allow anybody from the public that wants to comment, ask any questions. Once they're done, then we'll bring you back up to address whatever questions they raise. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request and special land use request. Your remarks will be entered into the Record for Township Board Evaluation. The Township Committee... The Planning Commission is a recommending body. The Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. At this time, anyone in the audience is free to come up and ask any questions or offer their comments on what's being proposed.
Hi, Steve Seitek, 46401 Ryan Road. There's two concerns here. Number one is they don't call it compost. That's not an issue for us, because where they're doing that is probably 300, 400 feet off of Ryan Road, so we really don't have an issue with that, even though it's... I mean, you named the amount of landscapers that go in there with the leaf cleanup and all that stuff, so there's a lot of traffic. Our issue is the semi trucks coming out. Right now, their yard probably has 15 or 20 semis in there, and it's a mess. If you add another 100 semis going in there, take a morning, go sit in the parking lot of Speedway and watch them semis, they're driving like they're go-karts going around, trying to make that curve at Auburn and Ryan. You know, with Mount Road coming up, turns into Auburn, it's just way too much traffic, especially being semis. You know, and it is a safety hazard also. So I just don't think Ryan Road, like you said, isn't going to handle that amount of traffic if you add 100, 150 semis to that parking spot. So that's about all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hello, Jim Cable, 47169 Frederick. We've been through this before. The last time I was up here, it was pure trucking. And at that time, you guys were pretty much in agreement that rezoning was not something you wanted to do. You were thinking about the... You were thinking about the master plan being changed and to reflect that we would get no more of this truck traffic or truck parking in the area. So with that, I wanted to say, I kind of laughed a little bit when they said that they were parking trucks for years. This is true, but they've been doing it illegally. And they've been in court recently about the same. I don't know if you're aware of it. Last Thursday, Mr. Stathkus and I and the city code enforcement agent took a drive down in that area. And he agreed that Ryan Road is no place for these semi trucks in these parking areas. We sat in the, across from Speedway parking lot, and he got to see firsthand within 30 seconds of the trucks trying to navigate that intersection there. They can't navigate Hamblin Road, they can't navigate 23 Mile. On Auburn and Ryan, those trucks making a right-hand turn onto Auburn and Auburn making a right-hand turn onto Ryan, the vehicles in the left turn lanes on the opposite side have to back up. Can you imagine trying to get all these cars to back up all the time? It is a, it's hilarious to watch. Most people now know it, so they stay back a little bit. If they're the only car in that intersection, they don't activate the lights. And a light might change a couple times before they get the green arrow. Also, I wanted to note that this location that they're in, and I can't even believe that they would get a passing lane in that because they'd be infringing on the fire station. The fire station is directly across the street from them. Both the fire station and Riverbend's Park. Can you imagine with the traffic that there already is, a fire truck trying to get out of there when there's a semi truck trying to pull in there repeatedly? It backs traffic up even more. I'd hate to see somebody needing assistance from the fire department, and the fire department has to wait. We've been through this before, and you're all pretty much in agreement that this is not the place for these kind of actions to take place. And if they get approved, that sets precedence for a lot of other, a lot of other properties along that stretch of Ryan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else wish to comment?
Good afternoon, my name's Kevin Stewart, 46313 Ryan Road, Shelby Township, Michigan. Concerns that I have, as far as the variance that they're asking for for light manufacturing, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is the noise that comes along with those 100 or so semi trucks. I can sit on my patio facing Auburn Road across the lake that is just south of Auburn Road, and the noise is deafening. And it is at all hours of the day. And I couldn't sleep last night, got up and took my dog out. It was 1 o'clock in the morning, and there are semi trucks coming in and out of up and down Auburn Road and up and down Ryan. If anything, the volume, but along with the volume comes the noise. It's a quiet area. I can't imagine what the people that live along Ryan Road have to put up with. We're actually set off a distance from Ryan Road, and it's still loud. And that's probably my only concern right now is, and I noticed it last night and heard about this meeting and felt the need to come in and make some comment about it.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Danielle Godoba, 47791 Greenview. So my backyard backs up to Ryan Road. And the thing, we came here for the pure trucking. It's the same thing, and we have probably come every time because it is loud. I tried to pull in on Durham because that's how I get to my house, and these trucks come by the side of me, throw rocks up at my Jeep. They are, it's awful. So you can't, like, they don't wait for you to turn left. They literally go around you, and I just can't imagine that we're going to have more because you already can't get in and out of our neighborhood, you can't get around the corner, you can't. It's very challenging. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, twice? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. Mr. Turner?
Now comments, or you want to wait till?
Till.
Oh, is Julie going to say something, or should I?
She already has.
Oh, she has, okay, well, I guess I'll make my comments then. Yeah, Mr. Cable, you're right, we've been down this road, no pun intended, before with Ryan Road. I live in the area, as you know, and I have a vested interest in making sure this area is maintained as best we can. What I heard from the presentation bothered me, just as well as the other development that came up bothered me. Here are things like, you know, you want to rent space for commercial vehicles to park their trucks, trucks, trailers, and large commercial vehicles. Trucks will be leaving every day, so just picture what that's going to look like on Ryan Road. And I drive Ryan Road all the time. Maybe not as, haven't been around as much as Jerry has, but I do ride it, drive it every day. Commercial vehicles, 130 potential in that area. So you know, if there's 130, they're going to go more than 50. And if they've been doing it for years, they're coming here to get rezoning to expand what they're already doing. And I'm not trying to say you shouldn't expand your business, but I'm just making some comments. There's no improvements to the site plan itself, so we're going to be getting all of these truck traffic on Ryan Road without any improvements to the property. So we've heard they want to rezone it to adjust to what they've been doing for years, and I want to adjust possibly zoning to what fits the area or rezoning to what fits the area. A question was asked, how many trucks would there be? And the answer was, well, it depends on the season. Well, traffic on Ryan Road has no season. Traffic is a nuisance and an irritant year-round if anybody drives in that area. Things have changed a lot since the 40s and 50s. Things have changed since the 70s. Things have changed since the year 2020 on Ryan Road. Much more traffic than there is today. I really do not personally see how we could justify this proposal for Ryan Road. Again, we've been down it before. We seem to get the message. The residents seem to know the message. The problem is, some of the developers in the area just either aren't listening or hoping that we change. I'm not willing to change. Thank you.
I guess I sort of editorialize as I go through. The one nice thing I have is having access to the gavel. The use that you have for that area makes, it's not inappropriate for the area. You know, because what it was before that was all kinds of dumps and, you know, and the use, you know, you've got the liquid disposal that was down the road from it. It's always been storage. It's always been sort of the heavy used area of the township. That's what that property is. Now, will that, will that property become, you know, some million-dollar homes and great estates? No, it's likely not going to do that. Even, you know, any kind of even office or retail or any kind of, the commercials are somewhat limited based on what that ground is on and what it is. The issue that I have that I really can't get over is the fact that Ryan Road, the infrastructure does not allow for that use right now. If we were to expand it, I think it's a different question. And I think a lot of these uses that have come before us would say, yeah, it would make sense. I mean, the previous trucking, it was a beautiful, two nice buildings, paved the whole thing. It'd be up, probably has, you know, tier-one clients. It'd be as nice a use for that, but the problem was to put that many trucks onto a two-lane road that has elevation, that has curves. It just, it just doesn't, and it's really a bit of an artery for that area of the township, but it just doesn't work. And so, not that I don't sympathize, and not that I don't believe that what you do is somewhat appropriate there, but the problem is that the township's infrastructure just does not warrant it. It just can't sustain that use of the property. And whether you had been doing it forever, the problem is, is those uses were happening that we didn't really, well, we didn't enforce, you know, just started to enforce, you know, the ordinances, the zoning ordinances. And that sort of allowed, you know, the mess to occur, that kind of traffic in an area that just cannot sustain it. So any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grodd.
To our engineer, any violations, complaints about the site?
Yes, Mr. Grodd, we have a number of violations, those who I believe were included in your packet as well.
Any outstanding lately, outstanding as well?
Yes, yes.
Many?
Yes. Well, the outdoor truck storage, the processing of the topsoil and the mulch. But they have ceased those operations until a decision has been rendered.
Heavy manufacturing, what else can be put in there once they get the rezoning?
Heavy manufacturing allows for uses within a building and outdoors. Now landscaping companies that are doing a lot of outdoor storage, such as topsoil or mulch or landscaping materials, those would all be special land uses in the heavy manufacturing district.
How large is the lot?
Well, there's two parcels that are part of this rezoning, and let me see here exactly how many acres it is. 12.02 acres.
The rezoning, what the petitioner is requesting is a very wide area of activities on site once the rezoning is requested.
Can I get just a clarification? This is a conditional rezoning.
This is a conditional rezoning, correct.
The rezoning is only for the specific ordinance that they're asking for, not just a ramp.
Even with that, I have a problem because you're going from
That's correct.
From topsoil, storage, outdoor equipment and materials, trucks, in and out, dust. I would imagine that summertime, you've got some dust issues there with topsoil. Noise was addressed. So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with you that you said all kinds of dumps in the area. That doesn't mean we have to continue with the dumps in the area. It's our job to fix it. I just want the residents in the area to know that you're not forgotten at all. It's just because in some areas, you've got homes that are not half a million villas like in the north where a million or a million and a half. It doesn't mean that we're going to pass, pay less attention to you and try to help you out and beautify that area as well. So it's an investment you made. You heard me speak before, and it's your investment, it's your capital for life. You invested in a home and you want to maintain it. Once, if we grant this rezoning, that area will be effective for years to come. I mean, years. And it's not necessarily in positive way. I am, I'm not in favor of zoning, and I'm going to be voting no on rezoning, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple items that I'd like to address. So just on my end, as far as the site plan goes, number one, the site plan was lacking a lot of detail that we would need for this use. Another thing would be, none of the special land use standards have been addressed with the application. You know, we'll need to know the scope of recycling and storage of actually detailed plan of what's going to be there. I know that they are, have some outstanding violations with the soil erosion, the county soil erosion department. I think a traffic study, if you choose to postpone it, this would be required. We've required everybody else to come in with traffic studies when we've considered these types of uses, so that would be required as well. Screening and landscaping improvements along Ryan Road would be required as well in addition to perhaps a review by Macomb County Department of Roads. And a bypass lane and an ASAL DCEL lane is required on Ryan Road. I just wanted to make those comments that
Okay, thank you.
Would be required.
Does the petitioner have any final comments that they want to make? And again, really to address whatever comments were made. It was largely the impact that the truck traffic has on Ryan Road.
Yeah, the first thing I want to address to the residents, we're not asking for any more trucks. We got
No, no, sir, to address the body, address the board.
I get two or three people ask me to rent spots every week. I turn them down 99% of the time. We don't, we don't want no more people renting there. We got enough people renting there. We don't want nothing to change. I'm not asking for more trucks in there. What we do have on the west side of Ryan Road is a DCEL and a CCEL lane approved by the county. The county is the one that told us not to put in the passing lane. We'll put a passing lane in, and if we do, it will not obstruct the fire station that is down the street from us at all. We don't have a problem with that.
The fire station is not across the street.
No, the fire station is not across the street. So if we do put a passing lane in, it wouldn't affect it at all. But the truck traffic, I understand Ryan Road, it's increased over the years. Our truck traffic that's been in and out of that place for decades really hasn't changed. We're not asking to park 130 trucks in there. I could never pit 130 trucks on that property. Whatever trucks we have in there now is the most you'll ever see in there. We know that the trucks, once they come into our yard and park, they need a certain amount of room to maneuver and park. And I just don't have that much room in there. So we're really not asking for more trucking. We're just asking that, you know, what we have be, you know, sufficient. And the whole zoning thing, I'm really not familiar with this rezoning thing. The township's the one that told me that I had to rezone for what we're doing in there. You know, I don't want to rezone to heavy manufacture. I don't even want to be thought of as as being heavy manufacturers.
Just a couple of your points. The application you made says 130 spots, so that's kind of what we have to deal with. Now, if that's an error, then maybe you need to look at your application, wherever you filled out the application, I'm saying, okay? And in terms of the zoning you have currently, you cannot do what you're doing, okay? That's why the township said, and they've taken you, you know, you're violating the ordinance because we don't allow that use in that kind of zoning district, okay?
That's why we turned in the application.
The spots that we, the spots that we have, the 130, out of the 130, 72 of them are large enough for semis, but that's it.
Okay, so again,
The other spots are smaller spots.
So we get an application that is requesting, you know, a certain, and especially this one where it's conditional. You're saying, okay, give us this zoning and we will do this. This is what we want out of this. This is 130 spots, which is significantly more. And it doesn't, and frankly, then we don't even have a site plan that shows how that, you know, where are you going to put them?
The site plan does identify the dimensions of the spots.
Of the 130 spots?
Yes.
Okay.
What else was there?
I know that the fire department is like right at the 300 feet.
Yeah, yeah, no, we've got aerials, we've got a map, so, yeah. The board is aware of. Okay.
There was multiple citations. We were only aware of the zoning citations.
Yeah. We had a meeting with the county soil erosion. They didn't have a problem with what we were doing in there. We weren't cited for anything wrong. All the water on our property drains onto our property. And the only problem we have is with the county right-of-way doesn't drain because the county right-of-way because the county right of way, that's Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing improved for the county to drain the water that sometimes lays on our approach. So, they put a storm line in. The county didn't ask us or do anything about tapping into our approach to alleviate the situation. But other than the meeting I had earlier this year with the soil erosion department from the county, they didn't have any problem with what, there is no soil erosion problems on our property. I've had the DEQ come in a couple of times in the last ten years to
So, you're addressing issues that frankly, we don't know the specifics. There was a general question asked, what there were, and she may have just been referring to the zoning and not to all, what other issues may exist. Okay, so, thank you.
Is there anything else?
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, a recommendation on the rezoning request, which I, so, or Bob or Julie, whichever. So, that's really the first thing we're taking, is the rezoning, because then the special land use is really gonna be contingent on the first, right? Whether that's even necessary is whether the, the special, whether that gets approved.
Well, being that this is all tied into, into one application, Bob, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Bob. I would imagine that they have to act on one, because one goes with the other. If we are just going to leave it as a light manufacturing and allow for outdoor storage as we've done with special land use approval, they haven't met the special land use requirements.
Okay, all right, I'll, all right, I'll call for one motion for both, for both items. Okay, that's fine, all right, I got it. So, the basis for our recommendation this evening, for the rezoning recommendation is the practicality of the rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area. The owner's right to use his land. Do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning? And is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? And then for the special land use portion, requirements for this motion are compatibility with adjacent land uses, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. This evening, we may recommend approval of this request, disapprove the request, or table it to evaluate the information received further. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner.
With all due respect to Mr. Peak and his business, I want to make a motion that we recommend to the township board denial of rezoning petition number twenty-two dash zero two five and special land use for Peak Holdings based on the following. The infrastructure does not support the increased truck traffic on Ryan Road. The rezoning has the potential to negatively impact property values and equality of life for residents living in the area. And the applicant has not demonstrated that the rezoning is essential and the property cannot be used as zoned.
Second.
Moved by Turner, support by Groth. Is there any questions on the motion? Hearing none, Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Commissioner Schneider?
No.
Mr. Meredith? Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Oppone?
Yes.
Commissioner Larray?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. The recommendation to the board, ultimately, the board is gonna have to, will address this and will make the final decision on this petition. Next item is under Old Business, Site Plan Number One Seven Dash Three Zero, Stone Ridge North Plan Unit Development. Good evening, Mr. Turner. This is a temperature taking, is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, I think that's a good description. Again, my name is Jim Eppink, I appreciate the opportunity to come back before your planning commission. I am representing tonight Auburn Hickson LLC. I've had the pleasure to work with Auburn Hickson LLC since about two thousand and nine on this project and with your community. We've done a lot of work and we've had some great success on the property. What we'd like to do tonight is exactly as you say, Mr. Chairman, is give, I guess, a temperature check. We're looking at it really more as an update and a communication of our path forward and our plan to come back to you formally. As I mentioned, Auburn Hickson LLC has owned this property, oh, for the last twenty-five plus years. We had a PUD approved in twenty seventeen, which we'll review tonight. But what's, I think, great about it is, in fact, that, just that Auburn Hickson LLC is the original owner, remains the ownership. The faces that are here tonight, Nico Schultz, Brian McAllister, Keith Welch are part of that team. They weren't with us in twenty seventeen, but we're certainly part of Auburn Hickson. Tricia Basio has moved to another part of the company, and I think you're more familiar with her. We also have Andy Wakelin of Giffords Webster Engineers as part of the team. So, it's good to be back. We'll just take up a few of your, a little bit of your time tonight. But again, as you mentioned, we're not asking for any action tonight, any motion or anything like that. Our plan is to come back to the planning commission to continue to work with the planning department and over the next several months, come back to you with a request to amend the PUD. A PUD was approved in twenty seventeen, as I mentioned, for one hundred and twenty-one acres on the northeast corner of Auburn Road and Hickson Road, down in a similar area as we've been talking about with a few of the applicants tonight. The, it's probably most commonly referred to as the old soccer dome site that was there for many years. And over the last three or four years, we've been able to build and successfully operate again with Auburn Hickson, the Stone Ridge of Shelby apartment complex, which has been very, very successful. What's great about the property is the one hundred and twenty-one acres, but a fifty-two acre lake right in the middle, which really is beautiful. The original PUD was approved really with five phases. The first phase was the apartments that you see today, one hundred and ninety-two apartments within Auburn, within Stone Ridge of Shelby North. We, our second and third phase were on the corner, a commercial, corner was about an acre and a half of commercial land was approved as part of the PUD. Going up Hickson Road is Phase Three of that area, was approved for eighty-five single-family homes. And then over on the east side, we had two additional phases, which really was such long-range planning that the PUD just kind of called those future developments. So, those remain undetermined as what type of uses those would be.
Something wrong here?
To look at the site plan again, the east side, I'm sorry, the west side of the site had that single-family and the commercial with our apartment buildings being right down here at the southern end of the lake. As we started to move into the next phases, Phase One has been, as I say, very, very successful. We'll show you some pictures of that in a minute. Hopefully, some of you have had a chance to get out there over the last few years. As we started to move into Phase Two and Phase Three, the commercial and the residential, we found a few different things. Number one is Auburn Road has been really very well redeveloped in the last year and a half or two years, really looking at taking some of the commercial further to the west, more into Rochester and right at the edge of Shelby Township. Our plans also, from the original PUD, envisioned kind of an aggressive engineering feat, and that was to, to come into the lake and to fill the lake along the shore to create room for a road and create room for, for single-family lots. As we continue to pursue that, Eagle has become much more aggressive. Permitting, we have concluded through Giffords Webster and our whole engineering team, is nearly impossible to get permitting to fill that lake. If we were able to get permitting to fill that lake, I think what we would subsequently find is that real estate there would be probably some of the most costly real estate in the state of Michigan because of the cost it would take to fill that. So, we've considered that and we've moved away from that plan of single-family homes along the western side of the lake, which will result in us coming to amend the PUD or requesting to amend the PUD. Before we get into our plans for Phase Two, I'd like to just share what the success is, as I say, of Phase One, because some of our plans and what you'll see in the site plans that'll come in in the fall are continued investment into Phase One and Phase Two. We talked with a number of the recent applicants here tonight about investing in this area of the township. We've really, really enjoyed the significant investment that we've made in this property. Not only is the development operating really well, but because of the residents that are, the Shelby Township residents that are living there, the amenities that they're taking advantage of with the lake, with the open space, we're actually adding to those, those outdoor amenities, kind of those, those nice parts of living in that end of the township, as well as expanding it. So, I'll just go through a few pictures for those who haven't had a chance to get out to the site. But what you'll see when you visit the site is very high-quality architecture in terms of materials, in terms of construction, in terms of care and operating. And again, I keep kind of going back to Auburn Hickson, Nico and his team. They own it, they built it, and now they operate it. And so, the long-term investment is not like you see with an awful lot of other types of development that might entitle a project and then sell it. They're here for the, for the long haul, and so continue to invest in that architecture and the site plan. As you come into the entrance off of Auburn Road, you come down this nice boulevard entrance, greeted by a clubhouse with a pool behind it and a lake behind that. Again, the residents have enjoyed this clubhouse so much, part of our site plan amendment will be to come in and add a fitness center to this Phase One clubhouse. And so, we'll be doing outdoor amenities as well as additional expansion of that clubhouse to add a fitness room. You'll see how close it is to the lake. We've built a volleyball court in the back there in the area that we call the Great Lawn. There's fire pits and we'll continue, part of our new plans will be to put in additional pathways and activity areas out there for the residents. The pool's tremendously well-used, really becomes a great community. We've built amenities and will continue to build amenities along the lake to allow kayaking and fishing, adding some fishing piers out there. So, there are nine buildings altogether in Phase One, one hundred and ninety-two units. And as you know, they straddle both sides of a lake on both sides. As I'm looking west from this development, you'll see here the area that will ultimately be coming in as Phase Two. Initially, Phase Two went all the way north, all the way to the concrete manufacturer at the top. We're constricting Phase Two and bringing it just to Collins Road, which is about three blocks up from the, from the development site or from Auburn Road. Our amended site plan is to remove the commercial, to remove the need to fill and build those piers into the, into the lake, and then to build four additional apartment buildings to match the apartments, and then five ranch townhomes along Hickson Road. Those five ranch homes, we'll show some architecture in a minute. We'll have a total of twenty units, ninety-six units in the, between the four new apartment buildings. And so, we're at about a hundred and sixteen, I actually made a typo on the site plans that came to you, a hundred and sixteen new units overall, adding to our one hundred and ninety-two. And so, really what we're doing, when we back out those eighty-five and the commercial, we're about thirty-one more units than we previously proposed, but we've eliminated the commercial. Looking at Phase One before I get to Phase Two, again, Phase One is all about reinvestment, continued building the amenity package for the residents that live there. Right now, we've got a very, very high occupancy, and even from time to time, a waitlist for people who want to live here, and so it makes sense to continue to build into that community. We're adding that fitness center, adding the amenities onto the Great Lawn. We'll be coming back to you with a proposal to add carports, so that just under fifty percent of our parking spots will have a carport now. Right now, there are no carports. Our residents are asking for those type of upgrades. Right now, we have one central dumpster location, a compactor, and that works sometimes, but it doesn't work as well as we want. And so, the site plan that'll come back to you is actually deploying three different dumpster locations, full enclosures, a lot of landscaping around those, but to make it more convenient for the residents that live there to take out their trash to the dumpster. And then, within Phase One, we're also adding about twenty-three additional parking spots. We're gonna add obviously more still parking in Phase Two. But what we want to do is, again, we're, you know, that's kind of one of the nice parts of owning and operating it for the last few years, we've started to see, boy, that corner over there is always kind of competing for spots at the end of the night. And so, we're gonna do a little bit of curb work and some expansion of the parking lots, all within Phase One. For Phase Two, as I said, right now, it's really undeveloped. What we're, what we're doing again is to expand the road system, so that when people come onto the site, there's already three entrances along Auburn Road. There won't be any additional entrances along Auburn Road. There was previously planned one entrance into the commercial on Hickson, and so we're reusing that, actually aligning it with the street across the street to make it a little safer intersection, but that intersection was already planned. And so, what we're doing is improving the circulation, improving the sidewalks, and even adding significant paths and parks. From there, we're again proposing five ranch homes, specifically, single-level living, not stacked duplexes or anything, but ranch homes, five individual buildings, each building would have
Ranch, I'm sorry? You said ranch homes?
Well, ranch residences, there'll be four lease.
Fourplexes?
I'm sorry?
What are they, fourplexes?
Fourplexes, yep.
I just wanted to make sure.
Ranch buildings with four units in each, so fourplexes, one-story, so they're equivalent in height or actually a little lower in height than the residences across the street. And they don't connect, at least from a vehicle point of view. They certainly will from sidewalks and paths, but they don't connect, so if I'm in the apartment area, I can't drive in and there's not cross-traffic. Those are truly separate units and individual driveways. They'll be managed by the same organization, but there're not gonna be any type of cross-traffic or people cutting through. Beyond that, along the lake, you'll see that we're adding two large park areas, fishing piers, gazebos, outdoor grills, all these type of things that, again, our residents keep saying, these are the things that attract us to Shelby Township, these are the things that attract us to Stone Ridge North. Quick look, we've, we really enjoy this terrific frontage. It will now wrap all the way around the southern and the southwestern corner. And so, this Great Lawn area is that area where we'll have all these different amenities added in. Again, we've already done some, but we'll continue to do those. Those will be in the site plan, the same architecture. Again, one of the benefits of owning and operating these over the last few years, if we've, we've learned where the closets have to be a little bit bigger, where the kitchen island might have to change a little bit, and so there'll be minor changes inside, perhaps some enhancements in terms of materials outside, but by and large, the same look and feel of the successful building that we've already got out there now. The fourplexes or the ranch homes along Hickson Road, again, these are five buildings, four units each, so four families per building, are, are single-level living. They would front the homes across the street, and so they'd become part of the fabric of that neighborhood in terms of, you know, front door to front door, and there's no, there's no dumpsters in these. All the garbage and everything would be housed in your garage, just like at, at any other home in the neighborhood. And so, these will, will fit in architecturally, from a height point of view and from a, from a use point of view. We are not extending within this phase further north. We just, we just think that it makes the most sense to concentrate this down at the southern end of the lake. So, really, in a nutshell, what we're gonna be coming back to you, and again, this is just kind of an opportunity, ideally, to get some of your feedback, is to build a comprehensive, interactive community, you know, all the different things that it takes to build a community that, you know, in, in the rental business, what we want to do, just like from a township's business, is we want to keep residents in Shelby Township, we want to keep residents at Stone Ridge. What we're finding, when people do move out, oftentimes, they're buying homes in Shelby Township, like a lot of rental, nicer rental communities, we're seeing people move here to kind of get into the school system or just before their kids are ready for school, and then they typically would buy a home in Shelby and enjoy the school system here. So, our goal is to work with you. We're, we're ready to move forward, continue to work with We're, we're ready to move forward, continue to work with the planning department, Nick and Julie and the engineers. Our hope and intent is to submit for a PUD amendment, which, if I understand right, is a preliminary and a final review and recommendation from the, the planning commission, and then going to the board and public hearing and all those things. We would anticipate being ready to submit formally and provide an application in the fall, let's say in October, work through the winter, ideally with the planning commission, the board, and the community. And ideally, if, if we penciled it outright by midsummer, early summer, ideally, if we meet all the requirements and meet the requests of the planning commission, to have approval, and then work towards final engineering and actually breaking ground towards, you know, almost a year from now, towards the end of next summer. So it's a long process, it's a public process, and we thought the best thing to do was to come to you and frankly, ask for your feedback, your thoughts tonight, so that we can make sure that we're aligned as we come back in for an amendment.
Okay. To be frank with you, I'm going to be a hard sell on this. This was a long process putting this together, and I know there are probably several members that, that were part of, at least pieces of it, to sort of get to this point. And I guess, I was struck a little bit by, you know, Mr. Grot's comments earlier about, you know, not forgetting sort of an area of the township that, and was intrigued by this proposal, this mixed-use proposal that came that we negotiated and worked out, gave some higher density on, on some of the, the apartments, knowing that there would be a buffer of single-family homes, little smaller, more fitting, but new homes, new investment in an area that doesn't see a whole lot of it, that you should see more of it, but, you know, things are the way they are. So to come in after, we get where, and I understood that the, the apartments were going to be the first thing built, because, you know, those were, that was the easy sell for that area. But to now, to switch that from sort of a mix of home, single-family ownership of a, of a property, of, of homes with, with a more transient, you know, rental population, sort of made sense. Now to transition it into, we're expanding the apartment component by 50%, 60%, roughly, and then, you know, and again, the ranch fourplexes.
Right.
Are those rentals? Are those single-family? Either way, you know, it's, you know, it's going to be a combination of it, but it's not what was, what was proposed and what was envisioned. And to use, I mean, the, the condition of, okay, it was going to cost more to, it's going to cost to fill in that, that sort of is always a cost, but it's not an issue when, when two of the, the apartments are going to need fill to, to be placed on the new, what your, your, your new proposal. So I'm a little disingenuous somewhat, you know?
We're not, we're not, we won't go into the lake at all.
It's hard for me to see where that, you couldn't, from, you know, overlaying the maps, the two maps that we have, that those two, the two north of your existing that you're proposing, those would have to be.
Well, we'll, we'll, I understand what you're saying, and I'd, I'd argue, but we certainly will provide that information as we move forward, because, you know, that really is the sum total, is we can't get those permits to do that fill, fill into the lake.
Okay.
I, I understand what you're saying, and we'll-
But there are, I mean, okay, so, but there are, there is room for, for single-family homes there, maybe not as many as you had proposed.
Understood.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Eppich, I'm looking at this plan. I know you said that you're going to, scrolling through it, comparing the two. What is your plan for Phase Three?
Phase Three over on the east side?
No. The part north that you cut off of the, this is why I got confused originally, looking at Hickson Lake Plan and Quarry Lake Plan. Hickson Lake Plan doesn't include all the land would have been, to the south. So what is your plan for fate, north of, well, south of where you stopped by Collins Street?
To be clear, that's north.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Going north.
I'm turning, yeah, you're right.
You are right, and, and it doesn't help that we're showing them at two different scales. It really is just to try and make it as big as possible for the screen. We have no plans to go further north. Right now, that land becomes more and more narrow. Now, it's still within the PUD, so there still are, you know, in the future, you know, it still falls within a PUD, but it would have to go through the same type of process and amendment and anything else like that. Our plans are to go to this point north, to Collins Road, before it starts to get narrow. It does widen out again, but, you know, perhaps at that point, that, that might be viable for single-family homes, but I think as long as, to go, continue to go further north and not be able to, you know, the beauty of the last plan was is that we were able to face the backyards to Hickson and double-load a road going in by anticipating having to fill the lake. Right now, with the, the truck traffic on that road, it would be really not viable to continue going further north and have driveways onto Hickson Road. So unless, you know, unless we could get those permits to fill the lake, it becomes hard to think of how that would be developed going further north.
I remember when you first came in, you, they were going to use this whole thing as a great selling feature for single-family homes, and there was a plan going all the way north, so I'm wondering what changed? Now, a question you had mentioned about you can't get the permits to fill the lake. Has Eagle put that in writing to you, that you can't get the permits?
We, I don't, I, I don't think that we have it in writing. It's that we've-
Because I'd like to see some information from Eagle that says you cannot get the permits to fill the lake. I mean, I like the second plan, the parks and the paths and the open space, but I got to tell you, I'm, I'm, to borrow Mr. Moffett's phrase, I'm a hard sell on this too, because it looks like we went from a rather unique, new, single-family development on a lake to a basic, linear apartment complex with 20 driveways now coming out on the, onto Hickson Road. I don't see how Plan B is overall better than Plan A, personally. So for me, my opinion is stick with the original plan. Now, having said that, if you can't get permits, or you, again, I want to see that, I want to see the proof that you can't get them. Perhaps you could use the original layout and maybe work some of the, or reduce some of the density for the single-family homes. But I can tell you, when this came in, I believe you made the presentation-
I did.
Yeah. You sold it as this was going to be a brand-new, wonderful, single-family development in an area behind the commercial, in an area that needs it. And now, as I said, we're going to a rather basic apartment complex. I'm not sold on that.
Thank you. You know, and a rough look on it, you could probably get rid of, even, even if there is no fill, like, maybe it compromises 16 of your 85, you know, your, you could probably re-engine, you know, redesign it to-
With, with the driveways out on Hickson.
With the single-family, a single, a single-family, you know, you may, you know, may cost you, if, if there's, if you have zero room to fill, what you're, you know, I'm counting about 16 of them, that would be compromised.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Grot.
This is not approval, final approval today.
Not at all, sir.
You're just basically trying to find out if there's a stomach for it, what you're proposing. So what I would suggest is continue to explore our options and continue to talk to our engineering department and, you know, do your surveillance with, with other units, and see what comes out. I think that development, the first phase that you got is nice. I wasn't here on planning during the, I don't know, I want to say promises made or recommendation made, I wasn't part of, I wasn't here on this, on this board yet, so this is new to me, but I, I think there's a lot of reasonable options here, and I, I know you're an expert in that, and I know you'll find a way.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Grot.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Planning Director's Report?
I don't have anything, Chairman.
Okay. This is some from the floor. Does anyone want their three minutes?
Cable 47169 Frederick Road. Mr. Turner said what I was going to say, that when they came in here the first time, that cell was those 82 residential homes. And I knew right then and there, that was never going to happen. They wanted to put those apartments in first to see how well the cell was on that and expand those apartments. That was their plan from day one. Glenn Wynn told me that that was their plan. In this fill, can't fill the lake? Again, why can they fill it for the apartments, the two extra ones? But they can't even, even try to stick in another 40 houses along that lot line on Hickson Road. I, I think they're trying to pull the wool over your eyes, and they still have two parcels east of that going towards Ryan Road? What do you think their plans are for that? And Mr. Turner said it before, when we were going through some of these other apartments, complexes, were saturated in that area. There are at least 10 that I can count offhand in that mile, square mile and a half area, 12 if you want to count two on the other side of Dequinter Road and Rochester Hills there at M59. Way too many apartments. I'd like to know what their occupancy is now. I know they're said they're pretty full, and that parking lot is not full. So I, I disagree with his, his analogy on the, how many he's got filled in there. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else seeing that?
Move to adjourn.
Your support?
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
We adjourned.